If you have a phone with you.
Giving them up here so we can get started.
The clock strikes six o'clock PM, this meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. Could you please welcome this evening's invocation guest? We give the floor to Councilman Brett Nicholson to introduce the invocation deliverer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm so glad there's a great group here to hear our no stranger to these council chambers, our very good friend, a pastoral and administrative support to many congregations here in Pontiac, as well as the Auburn Hills Christian Center, Ms. Kathy Desaro. Reverend, the Reverend Kathy Desaro.
People ask all the time why we've changed our format and having different pastors every week. My response to that is, we have different people here every week. This is a diverse city. We have different faiths, we have different ethnicities, we have different cultures. And so, you're getting an opportunity to hear each of us worship the way we worship and pray the way we pray, but we could learn from each other. So let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to pray to you tonight. We thank you that we are still living in a free country where we don't have to worry about the bombs. We thank you, Lord, for the people in this town that are interested in why ever they're here tonight. And we ask, Lord, that you would continue to keep things calm and peaceful and let everyone speak out of the abundance of their heart because they want something better for Pontiac. We thank you, Lord, for your love, for your grace, and for your mercy, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for moments of silence tonight.
.................................
And continuing with that moment of silence, I want to read the names of those that our community has lost, including Lou Doyle, the mother of Pontiac's clerk Garland Doyle. We send our love and condolences as she was laid to rest today. The community lost Joe Louis Cannon, AKA Smokey Joe Cannon, Ernie Owen Fortson, and Neil Monroe, the former longtime editor of the Oakland Press. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Roll call, Clerk Grandison.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established and all members present and voting. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I make the motion. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. That motion before us, is there a motion to amend this evening's agenda to add a resolution number four honoring the life and work of Neil Monroe?
I make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. Any discussion on that amendment to the agenda? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on approving the amendment adding that resolution. Clerk Grandison.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to move up the special presentation for Pontiac United Black History Creative Contest Award winners to happen after the approval of the consent agenda but before subcommittee report?
I make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. That amendment is shifting up Special Presentation C so that way we don't have to inconvenience you in your seating arrangements for far too long. Any further discussion on that amendment? Hearing no further discussion, roll call Clerk Grandison on approval of that shift moving up that particular special presentation.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Was that seven in favor?
Seven in favor.
All right, that motion carries. We're back to the main motion. It's the approval of the agenda as amended. Any other changes, corrections, questions? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the approval of this evening's agenda as amended.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. No debate on that motion, so we move into voting on what is the approval of minutes for last week's meeting, but also multiple subcommittees that have taken place. Roll call Clerk Grandison.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
That's seven eight.
That motion carries. We are now at the special presentation from Pontiac United. So we welcome to the podium Tracy Hirsch and those that will be joining her from Pontiac United. We look forward to a robust presentation and we're so grateful that you're here with us tonight. These are your chambers, this is your city hall, this is your city government, and we're so grateful that we get to celebrate with you tonight. Without further ado.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We just want to thank the mayor and city council for allowing us to celebrate these wonderful kids. Can we give them a hand clap? We appreciate you allowing Pontiac United and our sponsors Oakland Forward and Cano Phillips, the San Foundation, to present these certificates and cash prizes to our academic scholars here in our city. Did any of our sponsors want to say a quick word?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, President McGinnis, Pro Tem Carrington. It is an honor to be here as Cano is coming right behind me. I'll be really brief. If all of the people who are here to support the children would stand up really quickly or wave your hand if you're standing up. This contest was a labor of love that Tracy put on along with Pontiac United, but it shows not only the fortitude of our kids but our bright future in the city of Pontiac. So Oakland Forward along with my co-director Autumn Butler, who's here, wave your hand, Autumn. Yep, is here just to support, and we hope to do more of these in the future, but our kids are doing such a phenomenal job. So we just want to give them a Pontiac hand clap and let the city of Pontiac know what we have as talent.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is what it's all about. This is what it's all about. Matter of fact, can all of our kids please stand up for me? I need everybody in this room to go ahead and put the biggest round of applause humanly imaginable together. There's 50 million things these kids could have gotten to, but they decided to go ahead and take time out of their days to go ahead and put together something absolutely sensational. I was fortunate enough to have the opportunity to go ahead and see all of the entries, and I'm telling you, you can't tell me that Pontiac don't got some of the best kids on the planet. You can't tell me that. And this happens because of Tracy Hirsch. Your ability to keep showing up on a regular, consistent basis to make sure these kids are going to be covered and taken care of is absolutely priceless. You are a Pontiac treasure as far as I'm concerned. Pontiac United, you know y'all the truth. You know y'all are absolutely the truth. This is what it looks like when organizations come together. Kermit was being very humble and kind, but Kermit, I got the memo. I was told about exactly the way you stepped up, you and Oakland Forward, to go ahead and put that type of money on the table to make sure these kids are going to have some significant prizes. We weren't giving out just keychains, ladies and gentlemen. We weren't giving out just, you know, a movie ticket. We were giving out cold, hard cash. And these kids, I mean, they represented, and they should get every drop of everything that they received because they worked their butts off to go ahead and use their creative juices to give you exactly what came across the table, and it was something exceptional. So the city council, to our mayor, to our deputy mayor, and by the way, too, Tim, I commend you too for you showing up the way you did last Friday to go ahead and give those kids this experience. That's what it's about. That's what political leaders, that's what politics should look like. That's what city leadership should look like. Michael, and I know you're part of the equation too. You're working from two sides of the actual, of the chamber. One of where you're sitting at and also two, your political, I mean, your community service side. That's what I need to go and see out of our actual political leaders. But you are to be commended. Parents, y'all are the real MVPs though. Y'all are the real MVPs. Because I know, you know, kids, you know, I know they can go ahead and be challenging, but for you to go ahead and make sure you give that stick-to-it-ness to make sure that they're going to go ahead and follow through, we need so much more of that. And because of that, that is the reason why these kids came through the way that they came through. You are to be absolutely commended. So to every last one of you kids and your parents that put it all on the line to give us some of those exceptional entries, salute. I'm using your phrases too. I think that's what the kids say, salute. Take care, everybody.
We also want to thank all of our teachers and superintendents of the different schools and principals. If you're here, if you can stand. And we want to thank our school board president Gil Garrett for being here. Okay, now let's have those awards. We're going to have the kids come up, they're going to tell their age and why they wrote about the person they wrote about. Noriah Phelps.
Hi, I'm Noriah Phelps. Hi, I'm Noriah Phelps. I attend PrepNet Academy. I am in the sixth grade and I'm 11 years old. And for Black History Month, I did Bessie Coleman, Coretta Scott King, Dorothy Height, Harriet Tubman, Maya Angelou, Muhammad Ali, Rosa Parks, and Shirley Ann Neidham Crizm. I picked these eight people because they all had interesting backstories. Like Bessie Coleman, I like planes, so like, looking into her. She was the first African-American woman to get a pilot license, and she also was the first Native Black American to get a pilot's license. And Coretta Scott King, American author, activist, civil rights leader, and the wife of Martin Luther King. She was also a leader for civil rights movement in the 1960s. She was also a singer who often incorporated music into her civil rights work. She was born April 27, 1927, her birthday. And she died January 30, 2006. She died in Mexico. She was buried in Martin Luther King National Historical Park, and her awards was the Gandhi Peace Prize and the award named after herself. Then Dorothy Irene Heights was in American Civil Rights and the Women's Rights, and she also got three awards, one sibling, her parents Fannie Burrows Height and James Edward Height. She died at the age of 98. Now for her, an American abolitionist and a political activist born into slavery, she would save approximately 70 enslaved people, including her family. She was born in Dorchester and she died in Moncton, 1913. Auburn, New York. Her real name is Armenta Ross. She was, has eight siblings. Okay, next page. Now to Maya. Okay, my first picture is Bessie Coleman.
She won four of her pictures, everyone.
Harriet Tubman. This is Muhammad Ali, professional heavyweight boxer. Maya Angelou, an author. Coretta Scott King, I was just telling y'all about her. Dorothy Height, she was an actress too. Rosa Parks, she was part of the bus boycott. And Shirley Crizm, she was, wait. Chizm. Okay, thank you for telling me. She, um... Yes. All these people, I picked these eight people because they all have done something in our lives. And for Black History Month, people don't really like say stuff about them. It's literally Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, and them, but it's other women of Black History Month that have done something.
We have Drake Scott, and that's from Rochester Christian School.
Hi, my name is Drake Scott. Hi, my name is Drake Scott, and I did my essay report on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I'm in the fifth grade and I go to Rochester Hills Christian School. I picked him because he is a civil rights activist and he helped for all the black people who can do what they can do now. And he is a superhero for most black people.
And then we have Haley Grace Henderson from Scotch Elementary.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Haley Grace Henderson, and I wrote about Alvin Ailey's because I can really relate to Alvin Ailey because I am one of the few African-Americans in my sport, competitive cheer. He was quoted saying, "I'm trying to show the world that all human beings are the same." And not, not that the color is important. What is important is the quality of our work. Thank you for your time.
Now we have students from Oakland County Media and Technology Academy of Pontiac. Jaleah Chapel. Okay, we have students from Graham Elementary.
We'll give a round of applause for Jaleah.
Yeah. Chase Newton.
Hi, I'm Chase Newton and I go to Graham Elementary. I wrote a story on Lorna Simpson. I chose Lorna Simpson because she is a unique and bold, bold con- constri- Because she is a contributory- I chose Lorna Simpson because she is a contemporary artist and, and, and she uses photography. She uses photography, paintings. Photographs and collages, and sometimes even words. She's known for, she's known-
What does she highlight?
She highlights representation, especially in black women. She- She was Black Girl Magic before it was even a thing.
It takes some village. That's her principal over there encouraging her. We have Kaylee Gracie. All right. Hi, my name is Kaylee Gracie. I go to Avondale Middle School, and I wrote an essay on Mahalia Jackson. She has a huge impact over me because I myself am a singer. And a lot of her music that she sings, I like to sing it myself, inside and out of church. So it has made a great impact over me and the people I sing for. So I like to call her my superhero because she has helped me get through things that I can't, I couldn't get through myself. So, um, she had, she, she did a lot of things. She was, um, she had over thirty, she recorded, she recorded over 30 albums. She released about over a dozen certified gold singles and a winning of total of four Grammys, which is, you know, a big number for a lot of gospel artists because a lot, a lot of gospel artists back in that time didn't have a lot of shine because they were gospel artists. And a lot of people didn't want to hear just gospel. They weren't inside the church. They, they didn't want to hear all of that. So that was a big, a big thing that I thought that she, she did, and she was pretty good at doing it. She had a big impact over Mahalia, uh, not Mahalia, Aretha Franklin. She had a big impact over, man, where is it at? Now we have Janaya Gracie.
My name is Janaya Gracie, and I wrote an essay on Thomas Gracie. The first Black deputy police chief of Pontiac because he's one of the leaders in my family.
It can be hard as an adult to get up here to speak in front of a group of people, so let's cheer these kids on. We have ITA now, and we have Vincent Garcia. We have Antonio Marcus.
I didn't want to have to squat. Good evening, my name is Antonio Marcus, and I wrote my essay on Thurgood Marshall. I didn't write notes, so I'm kind of like going off the dome here. I wrote about him because his story kind of relates to mine as to having a rocky road before coming on your path to greatness. And he kind of like is one of my biggest inspirations and I'm sure to other people as to kind of like building another generation of black politicians. So that's why I wrote about him. And can I get like a couple of thank yous out the way? Thank you to my school administrators, especially Ms. Sturgis. I'm kind of like excited you came here. Thank you to Mr. Davis for kind of like doing a spiritual pact on the hand to keep me in check. And thank you to my principal for- And thank you to my principal for doing an actual pat on my hand to keep me in check. Thank you.
Alexander Rodriguez.
My name is Alexander Rodriguez. I'm in ninth grade. I go to ITA. And I did my submission about Kerry Holly. I really did it because, I don't know, he just, how he was like, he was born in Chicago, so he was like, he didn't live with his dad. He didn't know who he was. And then he didn't live with his mom either. So he lived in a neighborhood of gangs. And now he's like one of the most known person in architecture, some architect, yeah, architect.
Okay, now we have Arts and Technology Academy of Pontiac. Tayshaun Alexander.
Thank you. Hi, hello, everybody. My name is Tayshaun Alexander and I attend Arts and Technology. I'm in the fifth grade and I did an essay on Granville T. Woods. The reason I did Granville T. Woods was because I can relate to him with his creative smarts and how he is known for all the things he made. Like, for example, the multiplex telegraph system that allowed people to communicate through wires today.
We have Tiaja Watkins.
Can you hear me? My name is Tiaja Watkins. I attend Arts and Technology Academy of Pontiac. I'm in the 12th grade and my submission was an essay on Dorothy Vaughn. I chose her because she was one of many female African-American mathematicians who worked for NASA.
Demetriana Payne.
Good evening, my name is Demetriana. And I did a poem on phenomenal black leaders, which consisted of some from old history and new history. Some of them were Phyllis Wheatley, who was the first known black woman to publish a book; Barack Obama, who was the first black president; Camilla Harris, who was the first black vice president; Deidre Waterman, who was the first female, and first female mayor of Pontiac, Michigan; Thurgood Marshall, who became the first, the nation's first black United States Supreme Court Justice; and Rachel Cogle, who was an author, speaker, and activist known for her involvement in anti-racism.
We have Luxurious Lofton.
My name is Luxurious Lofton. I'm from Arts and Technology Academy of Pontiac. I'm in the 10th grade. And my poem isn't one on, about a person in black history. It's about stereotypes that black people have faced and about accepting your- Read the poem. And about accepting your being black. The name of my poem is called "They Say." They say that we're ghetto and don't know how to act. They say that we're poor and on welfare too. They say that we'll end up in prison or even dead. They say that we are school dropouts and come from single-parent households. They say, they say. But what do we say? We're black and beautiful queens and kings, who's capable of doing oh so many things, gifted and unique, blessed from the tops of our heads to the soles of our feet. We're talented with our hands and show enough can't cook. We know how to have fun and even write some books. The world would not be the same if blacks did not exist. No other race can go through what we did and still end up looking this good. Black don't crack because we are all that. Black don't crack because we are all that.
And those were all of our students. Let's give them a hand clap for the amazing work. We also want to thank some teachers, and we also have prizes for them, just for helping our students and encouraging them. Ms. Julie Morse. Ms. Arrington. Mr. Sandy. And if we missed any other superintendent, school board members. We just want to thank you guys for encouraging them as well. Thank you.
Good evening. We thank you all for allowing us to come up here and do this. Thank you so much. I want to continue on with the thanks just real quick. I want to thank the parents. I want to thank the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the city council. I want to thank all that were involved. Our sponsors, Oakland Forward and Keno Phillips and the Ascend Foundation. The teachers. I also want to continue, I want to thank Pontiac United, who worked so hard. We really worked hard with this. And so I want to thank you. I want to give a shout out again to the superintendents, which are here from the school district, the principals. Okay.
We missed a student? Leila. Leila Beck.
Hi, my name is Leila Beck and I did my essay about Tracy Ellis Ross. Why did I choose Ms. Ross? Ms. Ross has shown us that it doesn't matter what your lineage is. It is all about the person and what they want to do in their life. Being a mixed race has not stopped Ms. Ross from achieving the things that she has. By watching her, I know that it doesn't matter what ethic value you are. If you believe in the power of blackness, you too can be the best in your field or profession or just be the best person you can be.
All right, thank you, Leila. Sorry, I don't know how I omitted her. Sorry, I do want to apologize for that. So once again, thank you, thank you, Graham. We did, we said, I'm getting there. Graham Elementary, principals here. We have the superintendent and principal from Arts and Technology ATAP there over there, all right? And we have the school board president, Gil Gair, who is over here. Is Ms. Eccles here? All right, here we go, from Pontiac School District. See what happens when we all come together? Organizations, mayor, council, community, teachers, parents, cousins. This is what community looks like. This is what it looks like to move forward in Pontiac. We have charter, public, and everything we need to make our students successful. So from me, I say thank you and thank you for your time, and we'll yield it back to you. And all of our Pontiac residents.
All right, President McGinnis, I'm going to use my council point of privilege. I need y'all to take a picture with all of these wonderful kids before y'all move on with y'all program. Because they got one with the mayor, they need everybody now. All right.
Will be at recess, although we don't encourage you to get up because this will be logistical maze here, but we're at, informally, we're at a recess for sixty seconds.
Deputy Mayor, get in the picture too. Deputy Mayor, in the picture, in the picture, in the picture.
You're just going to force it.
Yeah, in the picture, this is all the government. We got to get all the government together.
As those who are departing now from the meeting, we are giving the floor to Tayshaun again. He's got a few parting remarks, and we can't deprive him of that.
I would like to give a few thanks to some people. First off, starting with Mr. Goodman, as used to go to Arts and Technology and always believed in me. Ms. Hirsch, who always believed in me too. My sister, to who, if I, if she didn't tell me about this contest, I wouldn't be here right now. And also, she wouldn't be here. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Congratulations again to everybody. Want to give the floor to Councilman Goodman for reflections?
So before everyone leaves, I do want to point out that I personally, as, in my capacity as councilperson from District Three, will also be giving out a district award to every student who won today. Can you not hear me? Okay, yeah, I know none of them can hear it. Because I don't want to use my adult voice. Tayshaun remembers those days when I taught in third grade, having a yell.
I don't know if I, if any of them were in our district. I said, I don't know if any of them were in my district. I don't know how, I could ask Tracy, I guess.
Our Pontiac City Council meeting continues forward. If you'd like to have any side conversations, you're certainly welcome in the lobby area of this and the floor below us as well. This is your city hall. Please make good use of it. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So as I was saying, for those of you who remain or can hear me at home or in the hallway, personally, because I have seen so, well, one, seeing students up here as a former educator is an amazing feeling, especially students of, well, my own previously. There were a couple poems, well, there was a poem and an essay up there that were from students who I taught within the past year. Seeing previous coworkers of mine, it's just an amazing sight, especially to see them all wrap around these different students, whether they be students that I taught or students in our community in general. So personally, I will be giving an award from District Three, in my capacity as councilperson, to every student who won today. Because again, as a former educator, I want to further encourage and reward those students who have taken the extra step to, will show us what is Black History Month. So I'm extremely excited to do that. And whoever from Pontiac United, whether it be Tracy, if you can give me all of the names for each student who won, so I can get that award printed out, that'd be amazing. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor, Councilman Rutherford.
Nina Simone wrote a song called "To Be Young, Gifted and Black." And that is the example of what we saw today. We saw students who are young, who are truly gifted, and they're truly black. And we have to build upon these moments to make them into a movement. And so I just encourage Pontiac United to keep on pressing on. I am so impressed and inspired by what you guys are doing in the community, the Ascend Foundation. I thank you for giving these children a platform. And what the next part I hope we do is that we teach, we have some Toastmaster class for kids, so that we can feel them empowered when they get to that microphone. So I thank you guys for coming tonight. Well done.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor, President Protem Carrington, then Mayor Grimal.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to say thank you, thank you. Anytime you can see our youth project the way they done tonight is very powerful. I remember my parents telling me that it's, you have to know where you come from to know where you're going. And tonight, these young people definitely demonstrated that. Also, Ms. Hirsch, also want to thank you, I was watching Facebook, and you guys has a dance group at United Wholesale Mortgage, right? And I seen over a hundred and something young ladies in that audience. And I just want to continue to say thank you for what you're doing in this community as you continue to bring our youth together. And that's the best place to be, is in that group full of positive women. So I sincerely thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal.
I was fortunate enough to have the privilege of having dinner with these amazing young people on Friday. And as you can tell, they're all truly brilliant, and they've got amazing futures ahead of them. And it really is a powerful testimony to how much potential our community's young people have when we invest in them and support them. And so this really should be a clarion call for all of us as adults and leaders in the community to do more for our young people, to do right by our young people, and make sure that we lift them up and ensure that they have every opportunity to succeed in life and to live up to their brightest and best future and dreams. And so this is just a really powerful moment, I think, for our entire community, because it shows what is possible when we support those we've got to support, and that's our young people. They're our future. And so I want to thank again the organizations that really made this possible, and that's Pontiac United and Oakland Forward and the Ascend Foundation. Let's give all of them another round of applause.
Anyone else wish to have the floor on this special presentations? Thank you again for allowing the time for those special presentations to be made. We're now at subcommittee reports. I will do number, letter B first, and then move A to the bottom. That's economic development, housing, and planning. That subcommittee had their first, we do recognition of elected officials after special presentations, but without objection, I'll give the floor to President, oh, I'm not. All right. With that, for economic development, housing, and planning for that subcommittee, we had our subcommittee meeting yesterday, March 7th. And want to share also that the Planning Commission had their meeting, and the items of business that they considered was a site plan approval as well as a zoning map amendment for 788 East Walton Boulevard. It's behind where there is a restaurant and other facilities next to a storage facility. The storage facilities are extending on vacant land, but that will require a zoning map amendment. So that came from the Planning Commission, a recommendation in favor of it, but this city council will be making that ultimate decision, very likely at next week's meeting and the meetings to follow. There was also a gas station on Baldwin, at the southeast corner of Baldwin and Yale, vacant land currently. Well, there's a billboard on it, now the billboard's going away. But so that was approved as well at the Planning Commission. And then site plans for Westwood Apartments, which is on Golf Drive. They've added another building, adding more apartments because the demand is high. Their amended site plan was approved. And the Webster Community Center at the former Webster School on West Huron, that site plan was also approved as well. So with that, we will now go to facilities and property. Chair Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. The Public Safety and Health and Wellness Subcommittee met on February 9th. Many subjects were discussed with Waterford Regional Fire Department and Oakland County Sheriff Department. We was able to view some of the year-end data statistics. Oakland County Sheriff Department also is offering a file, file of life beginning with the seniors. A file of life is a vanity card that can go on a refrigerator and can be scanned. The car will provide medical information, including-
be scanned. The card will provide medical information, including prescriptions and emergency contact information. Also, since I'm on here twice, I can go ahead and get it out the way, is okay? The Facilities and Properties Subcommittee met on February 25th. Multiple topics surrounding the city's current facilities and property updates happened. We talked about repairs needed, as well as what other needs of each facility. Also, starting next week, Oak Hill Cemetery will be having a winter cleanup. So they are asking us to actually announce this, so if any residents need to remove anything from the cemetery, they can temporarily, as they clean up for winter cleaning. And that's it. President McGinnis.
All right. Finance and Personnel Subcommittee, Chair Nicholson.
The Finances and Personnel Subcommittee met for the first time on February 10th. We continue to meet on the second Thursday of every month at 2:00 PM in the Legislative Conference Room. Administration gave us a fantastic overview and orientation into our annual finance budgeting process, as well as an overview of our personnel and the budgeted and approved positions for the current fiscal year. We are, Administration is well underway into the budgeting process. For the next fiscal year, we'll be starting holding budgeting hearings within the next few council meetings. And the update was given a couple of meetings ago. However, we have our next meeting coming up here on the 10th. It's a day after tomorrow in Legislative Conference Room, 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Law and the Courts, Chair Parker.
Thank you, Brother President. The Law and the Courts did not meet in February. However, we did discuss the challenge that it is to get funding for the various things that this, the 50th Court does that is involved in. We talked briefly at the last meeting about some of the challenges that the Buildings Office in regards to heating, and are working to get those resolved.
Parks Recreation and Public Works, Chair James.
Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee met on February the 28th. Our regular meetings are the 4th Monday of every month at 12:00 noon, and they are open to the public. We had a presentation from Pontiac resident Troy Kraft, who gave a presentation on his proposal to start an elementary after-school athletic program. That is still being worked on. We had an announcement from Alexandria Born Gesser in regards to the public engagement plan to decide on a park for the new skate park. And that decision, I believe, will be announced later on today. The three parks that were being considered were Galloway, Oakland, and Richardson Park. Youth Recreation, Harrington Elementary School will start their afternoon enrichment classes on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. The sign-up for these classes is forthcoming. And information for this program, oh, the information has been sent out to all the former participants of PyRAC. And if you have any questions about the youth recreation program, you should call the mayor's office at 248-758-3181, or call me at 248-425-4663. We want you to save the date for the citywide spring cleanup, which is happening the week of April 18th. Every district will have projects planned. Approximately 135 new trees will be planted in the city of Pontiac during that week, thanks to the Rotary Club's 100th anniversary and a group called Relief Michigan. To volunteer, please reach out to your councilperson. We are planning lots of ways for residents to be able to clean up their properties. So please start making your plans for Spring Cleanup 2022, the week of April 18th. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Communications Engagement and Operations Subcommittee, Chair Goodman.
Good evening, everyone. We are, the Communications Engagement and Operations Subcommittee met on February 25th, so this past coming month. And the things that we discussed that are of importance and relevance were the move to Microsoft 365 for city hall, which was, has been discussed before in council chambers. Gathering some final details on that and how it affects different city staff. A discussion around possible employee computer use and security training, to make sure that we are having best practices when it comes to just using computers, opening emails, and so on and so forth, to make sure that the city is in a safe, strong place when it comes to, when it comes to that. There has been some updates and an RFP sent out in regards to updating the city website to make it more modern and make it more usable for city residents. There has been a discussion that has been had surrounding some restructuring when it comes to the city's communications. So that be branding, marketing, cable, and all of those different areas in a way that we, the city itself can make that much more streamlined and productive and effective for our city. And then there has also been discussions and feelers put out in regards to a city branding slash marketing update, as a way to just modernize the way that we project outwards to different communities. That way, we can kind of be somewhat in line with surrounding areas, and just making sure that we're putting our best foot forward in terms of how we are perceived. So that's being looked at in terms of just general planning and outreach. So that is all I have to report.
Thank you. That concludes Subcommittee Reports. I'll also point out that many of our council members are liaisons to other different organizations and entities, formally and informally. Councilwoman Rutherford's currently a member of the Housing Commission and the Library Board, so she's providing us updates and being a pipeline from those entities. We know that Councilman Parker's been appointed to the GERS Board, the Retirement Boards for the city, through my Subcommittee. I serve on the Planning Commission on behalf of this council and our city. So there are many different ways in which we informally and formally have these various different Subcommittees, and then other boards and commissions that we are connected to. Special presentations, we've gotten letter C done, so we are now at Presentation A, Resources for Pontiac Small Businesses. Presenter Olga Martinez.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Stevens, council members, staff and residents. My name is Olga Martinez, and I'm with the Schoolcraft College PTAC, which stands for Procurement Technical Assistance Center. I did have some slides that I gave to Maruva Peter, but maybe they didn't make it this way, but that's okay, right? We can deal with those slides. So basically, why I'm here, the main purpose is to encourage you to ask your businesses of whatever size, small or large, if they're interested in doing business with the local, state, or federal government, the Procurement Center is there to offer resources. We're funded by the Department of Defense, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and Schoolcraft College. And we have five counties that we serve, including Oakland County. So I'm trying to make my way around and just talk about it a little bit more. I've been with the center about 18 months, and so it's my first time coming to speak out here in Pontiac, and it's been a really great experience tonight, seeing all the wonderful things happening here. So I'm just encouraging you to do that, to refer businesses to the PTAC if they have questions, or concerns, or interest in government contracting. What specifically we offer is education, free classes on government 101. If individuals are very familiar already with government contracting, that's fine. We can help with identifying solicitations, or reviewing bid proposals, providing technical assistance. We also have events where you can network with agency representatives. So they may be from the Department of Justice, or maybe local with Department of Transportation. We provide settings so that business owners or leaders in their business can come and have a small group, you know, conversation with those agency representatives. And we offer opportunities for businesses to network with one another, which is really helpful for companies that have prime contracts or subcontracts, and want to, you know, identify more companies that they can work with. I think that's the heart of it. I'm trying to think through what there is. Anything else?
How about your contact information?
Yeah, I have some brochures, and I will leave some. And please know that this is a no cost, because really, our tax dollars are already paying for it. So please know that. We've been around for a while. I'm not sure how much, how often people came out into the city of Pontiac to share information, but I'm here. I'm a resource for you. And anything I can do to help your small businesses, or businesses of any size, please let me know.
And this is being broadcast through social media, and then is available for reviewing and is being watched live right now, if you want to share verbally other ways that people can find out more?
Well, they can visit the Schoolcraft College website, or you can email PTAC, PTAC@schoolcraftcollege.edu. And we're also on LinkedIn. So if you get in touch with us, we're very responsive. We respond usually within 48 hours, so you'll hear from one of us. And again, we provide counseling as well, so that's very personalized and individualized. And so wherever you are on the, you know, on the spectrum of wanting to work with the government, we can help you with an action plan and move you forward. And we're very happy to do that. Our counselors love their jobs, they love their clients, and they love helping them to grow their business.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. Just very quickly, 734-462-4438 is the phone number. But as many of you may know, I used to, I actually came from economic development. And our guest is really selling her own program short, I'm telling you. PTAC is an amazing program. It was set up specifically because the federal government buys everything. They buy everything from pens to fighter jets, and everything in between. And so what the federal government said was, we don't have enough small businesses with which we are working. And so they set up this program all across the country. So this is the closest one to Pontiac. So this is the Schoolcraft College PTAC is the one that is assigned for our area. If you are a small business and you want to sell something, anything at all to the federal government, they are set up and they are there to help you. Aside from helping you actually figure out how to best write your proposal to the federal government, they actually also have programs to help you set yourself up, so that you are best able to deal with them. One of the things that you may know, or will learn, is that governments often don't pay as quickly as you would like them to pay. They will, they will eventually all pay you, and they will give you all of your money, but sometimes it takes them a very long time to do that. And so PTAC will actually work with you before you get a government contract, so that you don't accidentally tank yourself by putting out all of this money to fulfill the contract, and then you don't get it back in time. That's just the tip of the iceberg of what they do. So if you are selling anything that you think the federal government may want to buy, and they buy every service, if you sell it to anybody, the federal government is probably also buying it, as long as it's legal. So I highly encourage you to contact the PTAC.
Others that wish to have the floor, Mayor Grimal.
Well, and I think, although the federal government certainly buys a lot of things, I think your assistance is broader than just that. It can include people who are trying to sell things to the state government or local governments as well. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. Local municipalities, universities, yes. We absolutely can assist with that, and we do.
Councilman Nicholson.
Just something that's on the horizon as part of the Economic Development, Housing and Planning Subcommittee, we've been working with administrations to start to devise a process by which all of the business licenses that are issued in the city, that we gather that information, and then relay that information back to each individual councilperson, so that way we can reach out directly to those businesses returning, and new businesses that are getting licensed with resources like this. So we'll create a resource list of which will be included, to make sure that all of our small business owners, as they renew those business licenses, are reminded of the different opportunities that can certainly bolster their businesses.
Yes, that reminded me that we do help with certifications. So if a business is considered small and wants to apply for a woman-owned small business, or veteran-disabled small business, or disadvantaged business, we help with those as well. Those are additional, you know, somewhat of credentials or certifications that the federal government looks for as well.
Others that wish to have the floor, Councilwoman Rutherford.
I just thank you for mentioning that part about making sure you help women businesses in this community. We have a plethora of women who have small businesses that need this opportunity. So just for the people in the back, can you repeat the number one more time, so they can hear it?
Yeah, it's 734-462-4438, or you can email PTAC@schoolcraft.edu.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor. Thank you very much for that special presentation. We are now at Amazon Hiring Opportunities in Pontiac.
All right. Can everybody hear me? All right. Good. Mayor Grimal, Deputy Mayor Stevens, city council members. I'm Fred McPherson, General Manager for Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Center here in Pontiac, Michigan. I'm also joined by Tori Brown, one of our operations managers, and he's also been leading a lot of community engagement for Amazon in Pontiac. First and foremost, appreciate the opportunity to come present Amazon to Pontiac, citizens of Pontiac, and make y'all aware of opportunities, employment opportunities within Amazon. So just a little bit about the company, a little history. Amazon was founded in 1994 by Jeffrey Bezos in his garage. The first fulfillment center for Amazon actually started in, it was opened in Delaware in 1997. So it's been 25 years since the first fulfillment center opened up. That fulfillment center was about 77,000 square, 77,000 square feet. Our Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Center is over 3 million square feet. Also with that, Amazon's goal is be, is to be the, Earth's most customer-centric company, where people can find, discover anything they want to buy online. So part of that is, as you see there with the virtuous cycle, Amazon's virtuous cycle, we start at the customer experience and work backwards. So for us, as we look to expand customer experience, we're constantly innovating, figuring out ways to improve that customer experience. I know for many of you, if you started out as a prime customer years ago, maybe you started with deliveries taking a week. Now we're down to two days, in some cases, sub same-day delivery. So certainly, that's part of the innovation of the technology that we've deployed within Amazon, being able to match that customer experience. So just a quick overview of our fulfillment network. Essentially, our products, whether it's sold directly by Amazon or fulfilled by Amazon, it comes in through a cross-dock. So essentially, you have products coming from all over the country, all over the world, coming into the cross-dock, and then those products are organized and sent to different fulfillment centers. Our fulfillment center is an Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Center, but there are also different types. There are traditional non-sort facilities, a lot more manual movement in those. And then essentially, once items are ordered, so a customer places an order through the app, through the website, if it makes most logical sense to come from our fulfillment center, associate will pick that item, it gets packaged, it gets shipped. It'll go to a sort center. From the sort center, it will end up going to somewhere within the Amazon transportation network. So it could go to a sort center, it could go to Amazon Air Facility, the largest one in the US. The closest one to Michigan is down in Kentucky, actually KCVG Airport. From there, it can go to, you know, different parts of the network, and go to our delivery station, which if you've been by an old Silverdome property, you'll notice there's actually two Amazon centers there. The large building is the Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Center, but the smaller building is a delivery station. For most of you, whether it's your residence or your business, if you've had deliveries from Amazon, it's coming in a blue or white van from that delivery station. Essentially, that's the last mile, what most people know, essentially the face of Amazon. You see that delivery driver walking up to your home, to your business, bringing that package. You see that delivery driver walking up to your home, to your business, bringing that package. So just a little bit on the evolution of fulfillment. So if you look at the pictures there on the upper left, that's what our fulfillment centers used to look like. Essentially, library shelves of product, a lot of manual movement, walking back and forth in fulfillment centers. Where we're at now for fulfillment centers, we've deployed a lot of robots within our fulfillment center. So there is example of fulfillment, of robots being used to transport pods that hold inventory and also coming to an associate who's going to pick an item that's ultimately going to end up at a customer's residence or business. So here, the thing I want to make clear is that within Amazon, we use technology and robotics to help make the work safer for our associates, also increase our inventory and also improve upon efficiencies to allow us to be able to deliver to more customers. So by the numbers, overall, Amazon has made over $530 billion in U.S. investment since 2010, also including infrastructure and compensation to our employees. $499 billion was contributed to U.S. GDP since 2010. Our fulfillment centers range in size from 600,000 square feet to more than a million, actually over 3 million square feet. And then about 1.1 million full and part-time employees are in the U.S. And we have over 750,000 employees globally. On our busiest days of the year, our larger buildings can ship 1 million packages a day, including our facility here in Pontiac, Michigan.
So to verify over 1 million packages a day from Pontiac, Michigan?
We have that capacity to do that. So Amazon in Michigan, so right now there's 10 fulfillment and sortation centers. There's 13 delivery stations, including the delivery station on the Silverdome property next to the Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Center. We also have one tech hub downtown Detroit, directly across from Hart Plaza. And then we also have seven Whole Foods Market Store locations and one Amazon four-star store. So with that, I'll have Torrey Brown continue with our investment in Michigan.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So Fred was talking about Amazon corporate, right? I'm going to bring it a little bit closer to us. Investment in Michigan, more than 26,000 full and part-time jobs created across the state. $6 billion invested in Michigan, including infrastructure and compensation to employees. $5.5 billion added to the state's GDP. 33,000 indirect jobs on top of the company's direct hires. And then 38,000 small business and medium business sellers and independent authors at Amazon. You know, right now at our site, we have about 4,000 associates. Of those 4,000 associates, 559 of them come from Pontiac. So one out of every seven associates at our building right now is a Pontiac resident. So I think that's pretty incredible considering that we just launched in September. Fulfillment by Amazon. We offer Amazon Prime, which I know my wife who's here, she uses Prime a lot. Trusted customer service and returns. Our service helps small businesses grow quickly and is cost-effective and simple. Working at Amazon, I can speak really well to this. We're an industry leader in paying benefits, starting at $15 an hour. We have comprehensive benefits on day one, full health care and disability insurance, retirement savings plans, generous parental leave and free college tuition, and then professional development. So the, the one thing that I love about this company is that they are investing in the associates and not just for the short term, but for the long term. So the A2 Tech, that's where they're taking entry-level associates and training them on all the robotics and technology to become engineers. Career skills, career choice. Career choice is particularly very impressive to me. What that is, is that's where Amazon is willing to pay for education, so college education or for certification in different skills, not to work at Amazon, but to work, work in the community, right? So we understand that everybody who works at Amazon might not necessarily make it a career, but we know that they're going to be working somewhere, right? So while they are at Amazon, Amazon is willing to pay for their college education. Military hiring. Veterans and military spouses drive innovation and raising the bar on customer experience. 2021 pledged to hire more than 100,000 veterans and military spouses by 2024. So far, more than 45,000 veterans and military spouses work at Amazon, hiring our heroes. Supporting veterans as they transition back into the workforce is very, very important at Amazon. And we also offer affinity groups. Amazon's 13 affinity groups, our employee resource groups play an important role in building internal networks for creating a community, advising Amazon business units, leading and servicing projects, and reaching out to communities where Amazonians live and work. And those are the examples over there. And then here's kind of where I play in. Prior to joining Amazon, I worked for a company for 26 years and I was actually stuck in Pennsylvania this time last year. So I've only been with Amazon since September. In April of last year, I had the pleasure of interviewing with Mr. Fred McPherson and he kind of gave me his vision of what the Pontiac site would represent. He talked about community, he talked about outreach, he talked about how he wanted to be a partner with the city. And you might not know me, but I grew up in the city, High Melton. Yep, you know, I, I went, I went to Webster Elementary School. I went to Washington Junior High School. I graduated from Pontiac Central. Got my bachelor's degree and met my wife at Oakland University. So when Fred gave me the opportunity and the vision to come back here and said that we were going to really do this thing right, I got, I got his approval and then I got my boss's approval. And we moved back to Michigan. You all don't know this, but like I say, we just launched in September. And so far, in December, Amazon's DET3 site donated $20,000 to the Pontiac School District. We donated another $7,500 to Grace Centers of Hope. We donated $7,500 to Haven's Domestic Violence Center. We donated $4,500 to Hope Warming Center. We donated another $3,000 to Pontiac Youth Assistance. We donated $2,500 to Mittens for Detroit. With Mittens for Detroit, they don't only provide mittens and gloves for Detroiters, but they also partnered with the Pontiac School District this year. We donated $2,500 to the Baldwin Center. We donated $2,500 to the Lighthouse. And then that tragedy that happened for our neighbors in Oxford, we ended up donating another $6,000 to them. But money is not where Amazon's strength is. Amazon's strength is in diversity. And right now, like I told you, we have 4,000 associates. So that means there's 4,000 able-bodied, ready-to-volunteer people that are ready to help bring Pontiac back to the greatness that I know that it.
So 4,000 employees at the Pontiac facilities?
Yes.
Okay, wow.
Yep. So, you know, our goal is to, to donate 60,000 volunteer hours this year for the surrounding community.
Have you heard of Earth Day, April 22nd with all the cleanup?
Yes, actually I was on a, I was on a phone call last, last, last Thursday, no, last Friday, with Kano. And he was telling us about the Earth Day and whatnot and we're partnering with that. So we definitely will be involved in that. But just overall, this was more of a formal meeting with you all because we wanted to let you know that we're in our, we're in your backyard. You got a trillion-dollar business back there and.
Well, thank you for laying that foundation. I imagine there's going to be a lot of questions and feedback, so we want to open it up for Mr. Brown and Mr. McPherson who'd like the floor. Nicholson, then Rutherford?
So we talked, the item on our agenda says hiring opportunities. And I have a lot of people that need jobs, so how do they find you? Where do we bring them? What do I tell them to do?
So there's a few different ways which you can get a job at Amazon Robotics Facility in Pontiac. You can, there's a workforce staffing office that's actually on our location. So if you go to 1220 Featherstone Road, it's right on the corner, the south, actually the northeast corner of our facility. If you come there between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m., you can walk in, you can apply for any position in our facility. Also, we don't want to limit it to just our robotics facility. Certainly, you know, based upon what I saw earlier with, with the kids, I know there's a lot of vision, a lot of opportunity with our youth in this community. Certainly, we want to create a pipeline for those kids as they're coming out of high school, whether it's a skilled trades position, also hourly associate position in our building. And then also beyond that, if you have citizens of Pontiac that have degrees, bachelor's degrees higher, certainly we want to make sure they're getting plugged into opportunities all around Amazon. Our facility is just one site within Amazon. There's certain plenty of opportunity. And then one thing I do want to highlight is with Amazon, we truly believe in, in the vision of, hey, growth and opportunity for anybody that comes into the company. So you don't need a degree. You can come in, high school diploma, GED, start with us. If you give us two years of experience as associate, you have the opportunity to progress into management within the company. Not too many companies do that.
What is Amazon's hiring practices or attitude towards people with misdemeanors and felonies?
Essentially, with people that apply for opportunities at Amazon, they'll get background checks conducted, just like a lot of other companies. One thing with Amazon is, Amazon's pretty open-minded. So what I'd say, and I can't speak to each individual situation, but if you do have a felony misdemeanor convictions, certainly don't let that hinder you from applying to opportunities at Amazon. It'll be taken on a case-by-case situation.
Are there local, I'm sorry, I have, it was, it was a lot of information. I have a lot of questions. Are there, with a lot of those constituency groups that you posted, are there local representation for those groups? Are we able to connect them? We have such a vibrant community here in Pontiac. Every single one of those constituency groups has a very large representation. And I think each one of us has a great outreach and we'd love to connect with those individuals and make sure that they're really embedded into what we're doing here.
Absolutely. So we're actually meeting next week. I'm gathering a community outreach leadership committee for the site. And then each one of those groups are going to have a leader to it. And so we'll network and partner with, with you.
Awesome, yeah.
Yep, so that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Would love that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
First, I'm just so happy to see one of my classmates back home. That makes me proud, Pontiac Central all day. Go Chiefs, you know.
Order, order. Here we go.
It's okay. They don't understand. But I do. So this is what I'm going to ask you. Let's say we were having a community meeting and we wanted to have a representative from Amazon there. How would we go about doing that?
Best contact would be me.
Okay.
So yep, the best contact would be me. I'm the community outreach lead for the site. So, you know, I'll give you my contact information and then you just roll that way.
And then also, my other question is, what is the timeline for when a person actually applies for the job? To them actually, the start date?
It's a good question. That can vary. Depends upon the type of role that they're applying for. But I would say normally you should be able to hear back within 30 days after you've applied for one of the hourly positions within the facility. Now, if it's a position elsewhere within Amazon, corporate position, that, that the timeline for that can vary, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilwoman James?
Yes, I am also very glad to hear that you guys have 60,000 employees that are dying to volunteer.
Well, 60,000 volunteer hours. We have over 4,000 employees.
Okay, okay. Well, either, either way, it sounds pretty good. And I hope that you will consider volunteering in our parks. In addition to being a councilperson, I'm also president of Friends of the Pontiac Parks. And we do cleanups throughout the summer and into the fall. So I would definitely like for you to share your contact information so that I can get in touch with you and let you know some of the opportunities that we have.
Will do. We appreciate that.
Yes, and if it makes it easier, our legislative councilwoman, Sharp, is here with us this evening. If you'd like to provide that, she can distribute it to the council member.
Actually, you can email me at Torrey, T-O-R-R-E-J-B at amazon.com. T-O-R-R-E-J-B at amazon.com. Or my phone number's 248-343-6523. Rarely do I answer my phone, but just leave a message.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you both for being here this evening. It's great to see you again. I appreciated the recent tour of the facility out there. It's, it's truly a marvel of modern technology and employees, as you've explained, over 4,000 folks, many of whom, literally hundreds of whom, live here in the city of Pontiac. And speaking of jobs, I really appreciate all the employment opportunities out there. I know you're constantly hiring, but I want to make sure that people at home who are watching or listening to this know exactly how they can go about applying for jobs at Amazon in general or at this facility in particular. And is that something where they should drop by in person out at the facility? Should they call a phone number? Should they apply online? How exactly should folks go about applying for employment opportunities at the facility?
So if they want to apply in person, they can come to the workforce staffing office at 1220 Featherstone Road. They can also apply online. If they go to the Amazon, www.amazon.com, search for career opportunities. They can put in Pontiac, Michigan, and it will bring up career opportunities within the Pontiac facility. Also, if they want to go beyond just Pontiac facilities to other Amazon facilities in the metro Detroit area, you know, corporate positions, they can certainly search for those as well from the website.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and sharing with us. I have one quick question I have is, as you apply, do you have to apply for the city that you reside in or do you offer travel? As you apply for jobs, do you have to apply for the job in the city that you live in or do you offer travel if I apply to another state?
Ah, no. So if you wanted to essentially work in a different location, you could get, you know, if you want to live elsewhere, you can get the relocation to go there. Now, are you speaking about applying for a job where essentially you're traveling back and forth?
No, I'm talking about moving. Do you offer a moving fee?
No, no, understood. So, good question. Want to make sure everybody understands that any.
Not that I'm thinking about moving, by the way. Clear that up.
No, 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 appreciate it. Good question. So certainly want to make sure everybody understands, we'd love to have any applicants for our facility. But Amazon's a big company. We have facilities all over the world. Also, we have corporate positions located in Arlington, Virginia, Nashville, Tennessee, Seattle, Washington. So for any position located around the world, you can apply. Certainly, if they extend the offer to you, that would include relocation to that site.
Last question. What's your retention rate for Pontiac citizens?
I'll be honest, I don't know that number offhand. We would have to look at it for, for the entire building, but I haven't looked at it specifically for Pontiac.
So if I wanted to call either one of you, y'all could tell me that later or tomorrow? If I call either one of you, could y'all give me that number?
For that information, we'd have to review it a bit more. So we could follow up with you offline for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Point of privilege, Councilman Parker. They've just opened operations in September, so I don't know that that would be a data point that they could accurately pull yet. They've only had a few months of operation.
I'm sorry, you lost.
Of retention, if you're asking for retention rate? Are you asking for?
Yeah, I was, but they've been in, they've been in the city for a couple of years now, right?
Uh, no. So, so actually I'll correct that. So the delivery station has been open, I believe, since 2020. But the Amazon Robotics Fulfillment Center, the larger facility on the Silverdome property, that actually opened on September 8th, 2021.
And my question is, what was that address again?
So, so the address, if you are interested in applying for Amazon opportunities, you can physically come in person to work, our workforce staffing office. It's located at 1220 Featherstone Road.
Hmm, and what side of Featherstone is that on? The north side or the south side?
That would be the south side of Featherstone Road.
Oh, this is what's happened. Pontiac. Any other questions for this special presentation? Thank you for that lighthearted moment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, thank you very much for presenting this evening, and we look forward to the continuing conversation to come.
Thank you.
We now are at recognition of elected officials. The school board president, Mr. Gil Garrett, was with us earlier. He may join us again. And now we are at agenda address. Two minutes to address an item that's on this evening's agenda. President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. We have Ms. Waterman.
Good evening, and I'm here for the agenda address related to the Property and Facilities Subcommittee. I previously talked a little bit to Councilman Carrington about the Phoenix Center, and I see that I'm bringing some new news, and I wanted to share something that I have that I didn't know that you had had, council, and I did give you copies of it right here. And that was the revised and restated memorandum of understanding related to the public-private partnership agreement that the city had with the equity partners that we had brought in as a result of the Phoenix Center deal. Now, there's some confusion. I did hear Pastor General sitting right in front of me here last week who asked, when is that tattered mess going to come down from the top of the Phoenix Center? And I'm happy to say that the Steve Cartier of Leave Contracting did say that tomorrow they're going to start taking the tatters down. Now, that was from the windstorm that blew through here and tore that tatters to shred. So I know that our mayor is working on insurance coverage to make sure that that gets replaced and repaired so that we can use the amphitheater again, but that has nothing to do with the public-private partnership and the repairs that they are to make to the garage. So that is what I wanted to have that confusion. We're still moving ahead. They're still responsible. As a result of that agreement, they were given two years to come up with a plan to do the $20 million of repairs to the garage. We still own the garage. We still own the amphitheater. They manage the garage, but we manage the amphitheater. One of the things that got confused in the closing, and I did bring in an attorney, Elizabeth Rogers of Jaffe, was that some properties had gotten conveyed to the property that didn't belong to them. I had to have her work with that to make sure, for example, they conveyed the garage to the public private owners. That wasn't what we wanted to do. That wasn't what the city agreed to. She was able to get that straightened out so that the proper properties were conveyed.
That concludes your time.
And there's more information here. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Waterman. Pastor Kathy, you sign up for agenda address?
We had a wonderful meeting with the Skateboard Skate Park Group yesterday, and I was sitting in a group of skaters, probably men in their 20s, early 30s, excited about having, what I hadn't heard, two skate parks. One is the do-it-yourself one. One is for the advanced skaters, boarders, whatever they call themselves. We talked at length after the meeting, and it was very, very interesting. They love Oakland because it's already there, and it is a DIY park already. They just want to upgrade that one. But we talked about the fact that they could have DIY at Oakland and the more professional park at Galloway, and that's what they voiced as they would like to have. And I said, why didn't you say so? That was your opportunity. But they said they would have more opportunities as things came along. But I thought it was an interesting take, an interesting thought, and easily done.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda address.
All right, we're now at discussion. Pontiac Skate Park Project Site Selection Process. Administration, you have the floor.
Well, thank you very much, President McGinnis. I'm going to invite Ms. Alex Borngesser to the podium to present what's occurred in recent weeks, as we've had a number of meetings with some of the skate activists, including Mary Jane, who's really been leading this charge for a couple of years now. So Ms. Borngesser is going to run through where things stand. I know that she's distributed a memo to council members as well. Our sense of the conversations, including from the town hall last night, is that a majority of those who have attended have expressed a clear preference for Oakland Park. I talked with the skateboard activists after the town hall myself, and certainly, a majority of those individuals who I talked with afterwards expressed the desire to have both the DIY facility and the new upgraded facility in Oakland Park. That came across pretty loud and clear to me. Certainly, there were some folks who preferred Galloway Lake Park, but a majority seemed to prefer the Oakland Park location. That seemed pretty clear in my conversations with them one-on-one. But I'll allow Ms. Borngesser to shed a light on that, as well as the general pluses and minuses of the different locations, and why, in conclusion, we prefer the Oakland Park location over the Galloway Lake Park location.
Sure. So the city conducted a town hall yesterday to facilitate community engagement and discussion around the skate park site selection. As you all know, we have roughly $550,000 to spend on a beautiful, free, public skate park that would total 10,000 square feet, coming from various funding sources. The town hall was comprised of 22 in-person attendees and 163 virtual attendees. We engaged in kind of question-and-answer session. Our city planner walked through kind of the pros and cons of each of the parks involved in the site selection, and then we handed out a survey. We allowed people to engage with maps, and then we had one-on-one conversation. The crowd and the attendees had some comments about really all of the parks, and the overall and overwhelming excitement was really just that the skate park was going to be built in a park. So there were not any major concerns about any of the parks in particular. Some of the conversation was around future development of the parks as a whole. And what we found was there was a particular interest in having the new skate park in Oakland Park, keeping the DIY skate park there so it had two types of skating activities. They spoke about kind of a sense of home in Oakland Park and that the community knows where to go and gathers there already for these types of activities. We had conversations around the concerns for parking at Oakland Park and the potential of developing new parking areas and more parking spaces, not only for the skate park, but also for the basketball courts that are already there and the folks who already use those facilities. And so our recommendation overall is Oakland Park for the site of the new skate park.
Thank you. Those who wish to have the floor, Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, so I attended the meeting yesterday, and I really was so excited to see the people engaged, but most importantly, that I fully supported being at Oakland. I think it's a central location. I think that allows the south side and the east side to be able to get there, whereas at Galloway, in my opinion, is just simply too far. And it is also closer to the skating park in Auburn Hills. So I just wanted to tell you, thank you for the presentation, and I'll be fully supporting the Oakland Park. Thank you.
Great.
President Protam Carrington, and then Councilman Goodman?
Well, I'd definitely like to thank you for you and your staff actually going out and listening to. I know I mentioned that I would like to have that there about a month ago, but I'm glad that you guys done your due diligence yourself and found out exactly what the community wants. It's not what I want, it's what the community wants. So I thank you for that, you and the mayor, for doing that. Thank you.
Great. We did also, I skipped over it in my public speaking nerves, but we did also canvass the neighborhood. We walked around the streets surrounding Oakland Park and spoke with residents door-to-door and also engaged with folks who were using the park and the skaters in the park. There were a couple of gentlemen who actually care for Oakland Park by themselves, kind of of their own hobby, and they were excited to hear that the skate park was going to be going there. And again, their only concern was additional parking, and they found that it would be easy to find a solution for that.
And definitely, it has been an issue in Oakland Park, as you know, since the two groups actually started working with the city in partnership to redo that park. It says parking has been a major issue. So I'm glad that the administration is looking to address some of that as well. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman?
I just want to reaffirm some sentiment that I am extremely excited for this, and I also agree with it being put in at Oakland Park. And part of that is not only due to what the community wants, but also listening to the people who did the work to get the skate park in the first place, and to see the overwhelming direction for wanting to have it there and having both parks. I want to respect not only the community, but the people who put in the work for that. So for that reason, I also support having both of them there. I think it's an amazing idea, especially when we talk about centrality to the city and just culture and ease. I think it's an amazing idea.
Others who wish to have the floor? I really want to commend the administration for the proactive efforts done to engage with the community. I mean, this is not the only town hall meeting that has happened. There were multiple sessions at both senior centers regarding the senior grant funding and other, you know, investment opportunities into those public facilities. And there's public engagement, essentially, town hall meetings scheduled for next week as well, to hear about the trailways and opportunities for our neighborhoods to connect to our downtown and recreation opportunities. So obviously, this is a strategic approach that the administration is taking, and I like that it's done on the front end when decisions are still pending versus, you know, once it's already, you know, the cake is baked, you better like how it tastes. I like the thought of the residents being able to add some of their own ingredients to make for a more delicious finished product. So with that, is it fair to say, hear ye, hear ye, this site has been selected? Or any final thoughts the administration would like to leave with us?
Yes, it's our sense that this concludes the selection process based on the conversations that we've had in light of the town hall forum yesterday, in light of Ms. Borngesser's conversations individually with councilpeople as well. It seems like there's generally consensus around the Oakland Park location. And in light of the fact that the city's Parks Master Plan identifies three parks as possible locations, we don't believe that there's a need for city council to vote on the selection of Oakland Park. If council would like to do that, we're certainly open to that, but we believe that we have authority to move forward with Oakland Park as it's our sense that that's the general consensus candidate and decision of those stakeholders in the community, as well as city council and the administration.
Any objections or concerns from this body for administration moving forward, as spelled out? Councilman James?
Yeah, no objections, because really, the process has always included us in terms of the discussions and really everything that was done. So there would not be really, in my mind, a need for the council to approve what we've all been, you know, involved in.
Excellent. Any further discussion? With that, we recognize it's a pretty quick timeframe that this grant funding is dealing with. So the site selection process had to be swift, and we thank you for not putting it on the back burner so that way the grant can be as successful as possible in the implementation. Thank you, Ms. Borngesser, for your work, and happy birthday to you as well. Hearing no further discussion on that item, we are now at Resolution 1. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution reappointing James Walker and John White as citizen trustees to the GRS?
Support, my Rutherford.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Rutherford. That motion is now before us. So the ordinance establishing these retirement boards puts the power in our city councils' shoulders to determine who those citizens will be, those two members. And the two existing members who have served on that for a number of years, their terms expire March 31st. So the two names that are before us are those two individuals very graciously willing to continue serving the public and represent us, the citizens, on that very important board that have very consequential decisions before us. The motion is before us. My understanding is that one or both of the trustees may still be with us this evening. Would either, would, take your pick on who wants to come first to introduce and reintroduce yourselves at the podium, if you're so willing?
Since I'm older, I'm...
Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is James Walker. I've been a citizen of Pontiac practically all my life. Moved here when I was three years old. I've enjoyed working on this board. I've enjoyed working for the citizens, the retirees, to make sure that everything they have due to them, they get it. And just thankful that you've considered me for reappointment, and I will continue to do the job that I've been doing for this, for GRS. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you, sir, and congratulations on being older. Next, we have Mr. John White.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And that is absolutely right. He is older, and I'm not ashamed. My name is John White, and ironically, I have been a citizen of Pontiac pretty much all of my life. I moved here when I was three years old, or I moved with my parents when I was three years old. And so I've been in this community for a long time. I have enjoyed working with GRS. I have learned on-the-job training, but I would like to think that my professional career, I'm a controller in the finance area, has also been an asset. And just like Brother Walker, I am serious about making sure that the retirees of the Pontiac system get exactly what they should have. And so with that, I would like to continue. It's been a great experience for me, and I would like to continue on with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for... Thank you very much. So discussion continues in deciding to bring these names forward. We did consult with our colleague, Councilman William Parker Jr., who is the city council's representative on that board of trustees. Want to give the floor to you if you'd like to elaborate further.
Thank you, President. I have known, I've been with these gentlemen in meetings. I'm aware of their heart. They have a heart for doing what is right. They have a heart for doing what is right for the retirees. They certainly are well-experiencing what they are doing, and they don't mind voicing their opinion and speaking to their opinion in what they're doing. And I wholeheartedly do recommend both of them for continued service with the retirement board.
Thank you. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
I, too, have had the privilege of serving on the GRS board with these two individuals the past couple of months now, and although it's not my decision, it's city council's decision, I couldn't have said it any better than Councilman Pastor William Parker.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion and hearing no motion to postpone for one week, we shall proceed into voting on adoption of the resolution reappointing James Walker and John White as citizen trustees to the GRS Board of Trustees. Roll call, Clerk Grandison.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
That motion carries. Round of applause to our two fellow citizens. These are not brief meetings, and they are very consequential meetings, so the decisions that are before you on behalf of the citizens of Pontiac matter a great deal. So thank you for your service, and thank you for being with us tonight to answer any questions that the council had. With that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution honoring Pontiac's first black female attorney, Eloise Williams?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. That motion is now before us. Any discussion? Councilman Rutherford?
I'm just so excited to see Ms. Williams get her just due. She was the first, and she was the blueprint for what it looks like to be successful as a black woman, as a black lawyer in Pontiac. And so I just commend and applaud this council for, once again, righting the wrongs and making sure people could get just due their flowers, if you will. Thank you.
Others who wish to have the floor? Councilman Parker?
Thank you. I found, actually, about Ms. Williams by accident, but when I read her history, I thought she was truly an astounding woman, is what she overcame to become what she became. And so as I read it, I thought, you know, this is somebody that I can truly, I really would have liked to have met her. I really would have liked to spend some time talking with her, and I guarantee you, when I get to heaven, she's going to be one of the people I look up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others who wish to have the floor? Want to emphasize, and this resolution made a point to bring this to the fore, but after 20 years of being a successful attorney and homegrown from Pontiac and through Pontiac schools, after 20 years of being attorney, she went back to get yet another advanced degree, a master's. degree, a master's degree in education, so that way she could educate Pontiac youth. And then went to teach in Pontiac schools, including in the very middle school that she attended, Jefferson Junior High on the south side of Pontiac District One. So I just want to really emphasize that. She made a very big impact on the community, and I thank Councilman Parker for requesting this resolution, and here it is before us. Any further discussion? With that, roll call on the adoption of the resolution honoring Pontiac's first black female attorney, Eloise Williams, Clerk Grandison.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven years.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution acknowledging Mittens for Detroit's distribution of gloves and mittens to Pontiac?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Goodman. That motion is now before us. Long story short, more very positive news that we get to celebrate here on behalf of the community. Mittens for Detroit is a nonprofit that works to deliver free, new gloves and mittens to underserved residents in our region. And very recently, they partnered with Pontiac School District to deliver a new pair to every single child in all of the schools. And so without further ado, want to bring their executive director up to the microphone to tell us a little bit about that experience. You already heard from Amazon, who is one of the local corporate partners, and please take the podium, feel free. You can bring your side.
I am so short. Thank you so much for inviting us. Mike knows, but I should say, council president.
I'm Mike.
Mike knows that my dad was on the city council of Oak Park for 25 years, 15 as councilman, 10 years as mayor. So if you ever see Shepherd Park in Oak Park, that's my dad. And I am really enjoying being in the council room again, and this is really lovely. So I thank you for that. Personally, I thank you for that experience. Mittens for Detroit, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and that is all we do, is we collect, purchase, and distribute brand-new pairs of gloves to kids, teens, and adults in Detroit, Hamtramck, Highland Park, and in Hamtramck, it's all the school kids in Hamtramck, and then also the refugee kids in the Dearborn Schools. And this year, we moved out of Wayne County for the first time to Oakland County to the Pontiac schools. And that is something that we became a 501(c), we were founded in 2010, and we've distributed over a quarter million pairs of mittens and gloves since then. And about five years ago, we started thinking, you know, it's really time for us to start expanding, and where's the logical place to go? And there was no question, it was Pontiac. And we wanted to go to the kids in Pontiac. And like I said, we do all ages of folks, but we really can do schools very easily with the right partnerships, not without them. And I wanted to, my sidekick here is Rosanna Hall from GM, and she had done a volunteer opportunity, and all of you, Tori, are welcome to come and do volunteer opportunities with Mittens for Detroit. And she had said, if you ever come out to Pontiac, I'd like to get more involved, because at that point, we weren't. When we started thinking, this was the year we made it through the pandemic, let's get Pontiac going here, I called Mike, and I said, he was the president of the school board at the time, I said, do you think this would work in Pontiac? And, because you need those partnerships. And he made me work a little bit in the conversation, and then he said, let me make a couple of calls. Next thing you know, I'm talking to Heidi, who's the communications person at the school district, and everything's gonna go great. The school board was behind it, the school staff was behind it. And then I bumped into Rosanna, and my husband's an artist, and we were, he had a booth at an art fair, and I'm looking at Rosanna, she's looking at the art going, where have I seen that? I'm going, where have I seen her? And I realized that three days before, I was looking through pictures of her and her big sort group, thinking, I gotta call her about Pontiac. So that came together. And she'll explain a little bit about how she got involved, because I think it's real important to understand the partnerships. At the same time, I got a phone call from Alina Healthcare saying, what are you doing in Pontiac? You doing anything in Pontiac? Because I'm from Pontiac. And they gave us a grant to buy gloves for Rogers Elementary School. So as you can see, this, my job started getting a little easier. Next thing you know, Tori over here is talking to Heidi and saying, I want to get more involved with the schools. And Heidi, with communication at the school, says, you need to talk to Wendy. And because of this connection, and Fred, you're going to get in a formal letter, but this is, in the meantime, thank you, we did get that donation of $2,500. It's been really hard being a nonprofit for the last couple of years, and especially when gloves are not available because of the supply chain, partners are disappearing, and suddenly this beautiful project has blossomed in Pontiac. And getting out 4,100 pairs of gloves would have been impossible without Rosanna. So I want to just pull Rosanna in here for a minute, and I'm making her do this, she wasn't, didn't really want to, but I'm making her do this.
So thank you. Really appreciate being here with Wendy and the whole, the whole team. You know, once I heard Mittens for Detroit was expanding in Pontiac, I knew our GM team really wanted to be involved with this initiative and bring in our local partners. So our goal here really was to let the youth in Pontiac know that the community cares for them personally, right? And keeping their hands warm and protected from the code was one small way that, and we're heavily involved in the school district, heavily involved with a lot of the volunteering here. Our GM, Pontiac Engineering Center, is proud to continue to stay in Pontiac and proud to be part of this great community. Was excited to hear about the Oakland Park. I know our GM, Modern Housing Neighborhood Association Board is going to be excited to hear how we can, we can support that. And when Wendy mentioned her partnership with the Pontiac School District, we, my personal goal was trying to get mittens in the hands of every child in Pontiac. So we didn't meet that goal necessarily this year, but we're going to continue to have that be the goal. So with, we were one of the collection points. We brought in Stellantis. They were a huge partner in this, and they were so excited. They have been working with Mittens for Detroit in the past, not in Pontiac. They've had their hands a little bit crossed with some volunteer opportunities through their leadership, and because of the partnership with us, they were actually able to do this and bring in a lot of gloves. We got the M1 garage owners involved. We got United Wholesale Mortgage involved. We got Norwalk and Fox involved, as well as, you know, several other, the Noon Optimist Club supported this also in a small way with Rogers Elementary. And so it was a really great way to bring all of these partners together. And then we sorted gloves, we distributed the gloves with our partners, and just really excited to be, continued to have GM be part of this community, and excited to be part of Mittens for Detroit and bringing all those partners together. So thank you.
Thank you. And I did want to mention about Stellantis, because they've been our partner since 2014. I came on Mittens for Detroit in 2013, and I brought, well, Stellantis kind of came along with us, and it turned out, like Rosanna was saying, when they had an opportunity to reach out to Pontiac also, they were extremely excited. But Rosanna really was the magic maker for all the partnerships, as is Mike McGinnis. And I, to have this opportunity to be before the city and to thank you all, to thank all the teachers, all the kids, all the parents, you are doing amazing things here in Pontiac and raising those children up. I was a little teary-eyed over there, I was glad I was short, and there were a lot of tall people in front of me. When those children, I mean, it's so beautiful what you're doing, and to be a part of it is really an honor, and it's not taken lightly. You're the only place outside of our Detroit area that we want to be in right now. And so we're working on building up our capacity to get to those, but what did you figure, about 8,000 kids?
8,000 school-age kids?
Yeah, about 8,000 school-age kids. And so anybody wants to give us some ideas, please do. And I just, I really want to thank you again, and I'm trying not to start crying, but I can feel it starting in this eyeball.
On that note, those that wish to ask any questions or any feedback?
I think I got a question, but I'm not really sure.
Councilman Parker?
First, thank you for the great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
As you were talking, when you were giving your gloves and mittens, do you also work, as you said, you work with the Pontiac School District, do you also help stock there? I think they have a little cupboard there that administers to the homeless, the kids that are homeless?
So that's, if it's, if it's mittens and gloves, that's all we do.
Right.
And so I believe that that is part of it. That is, I'm not sure. I will find out, because I know in Detroit we do, and in Hamtramck we do, and in Dearborn we do. So I'm just, I think I've just been figuring we are doing that, but that's usually part
You did give them some extras that you had, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So we had, we had, yes, and that's, and we, we don't, okay, I'm a mom and I'm a grandma. I can't just, if they want 4,100, they're going to get more than 4,100, because, you
Let me answer this question, then, because I think...
So what ended up happening was Mittens for Detroit ended up getting some donations that were not mittens and gloves this year?
Oh, yes, the clothing and the, yes, I'm sorry.
So that would have been the socks and hats, and we got scarves.
So that was donated to that, to that?
To that pantry?
Yes.
Oh, please.
If there was another opportunity that that happens, they will, they will continue with that.
Right.
Want to give the podium to Pontiac City Council, Pontiac School Board President Gil Garrett on this and other items, since I saw your finger. President Garrett, please, take the podium. Was that former Pontiac School Board Trustee Carrie Tolbert started that applause?
Thank you, former Mr. President, Mike McGinnis. I was actually ushering you to, to speak on that, because that was one of your many projects that you've done since you were past president of the district as well. So those closets are in each one of our schools, and to ask your questions, when, anytime somebody wants to donate uniforms, et cetera, it's donated to per, to the schools. And it's a closet at each one of the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? All right, Councilwoman James?
Well, I just want to say, it's a great program, and I thank you so much for coming to Pontiac and for doing that program.
Thank you so much.
Hope to, hope to see you next year and the year after that.
That's the plan.
All right.
Round of applause for Mittens for Detroit and the partners from Pontiac that made it possible to expand.
Excuse me, I want to mention that we, like I said, this is our 12th winter. This is our first resolution we've ever gotten from any city. And it's, it's so amazing, and it's so greatly appreciated. It means a lot, especially being a mayor's daughter, it means a lot to me. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Speakers list having been exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution acknowledging Mittens for Detroit, Clerk Grandison.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven years.
That motion carries. Congratulations again, and thank you kindly. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution honoring the life and work of Neil Monroe?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman. That motion is now before us. Longtime Pontiac resident who worked for over three decades at The Oakland Press here in downtown Pontiac, longtime editor Neil Monroe, he recently passed away, and he is a District Two resident, so I want to give the floor first to Councilman Nicholson if he'd like to have any remarks.
Every meeting, I'm reminded of how many legends we have here in Pontiac and living legends at that, and Neil Monroe was one of those. Someone that really provided a huge amount of opportunity to people that are in Pontiac to tell their story, to make sure that things were accurate and reported in a way that was fair, and, and really was a good representation for a media outlet that Pontiac has, and has been able to be very proud of. So I wanted to make sure to, to honor that, that life, that lifetime, and thank you, Mr. President, for drafting this resolution. It really does him justice.
Any further discussion? Prior to voting, we do reaffirm the condolences and the sentiments offered in the resolution to his wife, Cheryl Crandall, their children, their grandchildren, and all their friends, family, colleagues, and neighbors. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution honoring the life and work of Neil Monroe, Clerk Grandison.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven years.
That motion carries. We are now at public comments. President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, Raymond Nelson. Not present. Okay. Dr. Deidra Waterman.
Since I was here, I stayed for public comment, and I'm glad I stayed. There were so many things that happened at this council meeting. First, I want to say I'm so proud of Pontiac's young people. That was a display of our next generation today, and it was just very heartwarming to see the next generation that's coming through the city of Pontiac. That was wonderful to see. Also, I see you honored somebody that I know very well, Eloise Simpson, who was an attorney here in the city of Pontiac. And she, like many of the young, particularly African-American attorneys who came through Pontiac, was mentored through the law firm of Hatchett, Brown, Waterman, and Campbell, a law firm that my husband was a senior partner before he was appointed judge. So I know very well of the young attorneys who were mentored and came through Oakland County Courts, through that law firm. But also, I wanted to just finish the comments I had started on in the Phoenix Center, because that has an important legacy project, and that was such a win-win for the city. And I know that it was a very complicated deal that had to be done pretty hurriedly, because the city was about to go into default on the settlement agreement for that long litigated matter. And we were able to pull out equity partners who then were going to, they purchased the Ottawa Towers from us in a complicated deal, and then we sold that back to them on the arrangement that they would do all the repairs. And I know many people were anxious now to see how we get that Phoenix Center back into operation, began to use the amphitheater again and to have the festivals and fairs that people admired. But most importantly, that's what, it was important for me to make a deal in which we got the right things coming back to the city of Pontiac. So I wasn't told until afterwards, some months afterward, that that deal had gone wrong and went at the closing. And so that was very important for us to get, and I hired the attorney firm, Elizabeth Rogers of Jaffe, who is very happy to come and talk to you and give you more details of how we were able to bring that deal back. So it was a win for the city of Pontiac and not to lose properties to the equity partners that were not meant to be conveyed to them, including the garage. I was horrified when I found that out, so I immediately went and got the attorney to come and help us get that back. But also, what I wanted to mention to you, and I'm so glad that Amazon was here today, because that was a very proud thing for Pontiac, to be able to bring Amazon to the city of Pontiac. Remember, they had turned down Oakland County and the Detroit metro area for the H2 headquarters. So we were able to swing the deal, and I remember when they came to us, and I had to sign an NDA, I brought all our city department heads, and they said, we're thinking about coming to Pontiac, and, but these are certain things that we want. And we were able to get them here. That took a lot of hard work to convince them that Pontiac was the place to be. This is the first city where they ever had a distribution center and a fulfillment center on the same site, anywhere in the United States. We're proud to have you here and proud for the partnership that you're bringing to the city of Pontiac with jobs.
That concludes your time.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. Oftentimes, folk would come to me and ask me to make a comment form or make mention of something to the, to our new government, but I refuse to do that, because I feel as though those individuals should come here and present themselves and make comment in their own behalf. But a lot of them shy away from the fact of coming here, because they have to sit and wait for such a long period of time just to make a three-minute comment. So I'm asking the council once again to maybe move the comment period forward, so that a lot of folk that would be mindful of wanting to speak here, they don't have to sit too long. I'm sure that there's folk here in this audience right now that would have made comment if they're making it, would have loved to have done it a little bit sooner than not. I'm reminded of the mayor's comment as it related to having folk in the downstairs area to kind of show people around how to get into the different departments or whatever. But we have a very large presence of Hispanic folk in our city now, and I've been in the, in the... And I've been in, in the building and I've seen where a lot of those folks, they come in, they couldn't speak fluent English and even in some of the meetings, like our substandard meetings, you know, we need someone that can help these folk, possibly some kind of a reasonable accommodations, Mayor, that would offer some kind of assistance so that the Hispanic community can, can come to this, these proceedings and, and of course be able to present themselves. Even if we had a translator that was present at each of the, the planning commission and the substandard housing, maybe even one here, there may be an opportunity at some point in time down the road, Mayor, that we might be able to get some kind of a, I don't know, some kind of a program so that it can be read out on the screen or whatever, so that the Hispanic folk who watch by television can see just exactly what we're talking about. Now, I know I don't have a lot of time, but thanks for the opportunity to speak again. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Mine's actually a follow-up to what Chuck was just saying. Not only do we need interpreters for this Hispanic community, we also need them for the deaf community, which we have a substantial number of deaf in Pontiac. According to the ADA, open meetings must be interpreted. So we need a signer at, behind the council or perhaps when we get our fiber optics in, we will be able to run the crawl that interprets for the deaf and also can be interpreted into the Hispanic community in Spanish. So there are available methods, but we need to look at it because we're in violation of the ADA.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Billy Swazer. I am on the GERS Board as well as on the SEPA Board, City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association. Many of us had, of us retirees were disappointed with the meeting, with how the meeting went yesterday. We went and so many were not let into the meeting and they were fully paid members of the association. They were not let, they were in the meeting and then they were evicted and they were not able to return to the meeting before the voting took place. We had a majority when our numbers were showed up and we followed the rules, we said you had to be a full-paid SEPA member. From the date you retire, you had to pay your dues, a hundred yed dollars a year. We were told the numbers, a number of times, that people were waiting in the waiting area to be let in, but they wouldn't identify theirselves. One of the persons that many of you probably know is Matty Hatchet. And I cannot imagine that Matty Hatchet would not identify herself, since she identifies herself everywhere else she goes. We tried to get a meeting with the, with our retirement, with our SEPA Board because the $400 issue. $400 the retirees would have gotten since 2013 and it was given to us by the emergency manager and then renewed each year by the administration. And we got that in lieu of our insurance. In 2013, in February, many of us were giving insurance. Around May 15th or thereabouts, the, there will be an actuary study completed by, oh, sorry, by March 15th or thereabouts, there will be an actuary study of the liabilities of the Viva Board that will be completed. At the, at the meeting, my resolutions, two of which were not passed, I think mainly because we did not, our members could not get in. There was a resolution that was passed to postpone the lawsuit against the GERS and parties including the city, SEPA, the GERS, and the Viva will meet and discuss the monies that will be coming from GERS to the Viva. Just want you to know that one of our deep concerns is that the SEPA Board is using the Viva Board's administrator to access the meeting and denying dues-paying members a right to vote, to a fair vote. The SEPA Board's demand-
That concludes your time.
Thank you, Ms. Swazer. Ms. Andrea Samples?
She's probably not here. She's one of the people from-
All right, thank you.
-my organization.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, communities large, governance. I'm, I'm really happy tonight. I'm really pleased. The school board, members, the students were here tonight and the receptivity is outstanding. I'm glad we could see that our students are rising, they are moving, they are on a cloud of success. And at that point when they were speaking, I noticed the attention of the council members and the citizens around. They were very exact. They were very exact. Remind me of last week, not remind me, went on a flashback to African-American history and sort of damper was on the audience and the council didn't seem to enthuse and then Quincy Stewart spoke up and all of a sudden it was revived. But with this group tonight, automatically, I thank you. I thanks the citizens, those of you watching, those of you who are here. One point struck me tonight. Amazon came to us and guess what? They're still sitting here. Let me tell you something, I've been here for forty-some years, twenty-five, up to this podium. Everybody comes in, want to present, I want to bring, I want to build, I want to sell, have exhibits, and half an hour before the meeting is over, they're out the door. Thank you so much. It proves to me that you are sincere, you're dedicated and motivated, and motivated to serve our people in the city of Pontiac. I wake up to serve. And, and you don't, no, I'm me, but I'm civil rights, community activist, been in Pontiac over forty years serving. As I said, I wake up to serve my people. Thank you so much for your attitude, for your attention, and we are going to keep moving forward. I had something else on the agenda tonight, but I don't want to dampen the spirit. Don't want to dampen. It was about the three minutes, you and I talked about that. But again, hey, we all should be very happy to see success by our students and their teachers during acceptance. I will say this, I haven't seen this in the last four to six years. This type of happiness and cooperation between the two entities, as I said, I'm here, I've been on the case for years. Thank you so much, not for our opportunity, because we all deserve it, but for, more or less for your attention. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Council, Mayor, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac. Don't let any day pass with any regrets. I'm a volunteer in the Trinity Church process that goes on every Thursday. It's a six-to-eight-hour process, but it does reinforce people in need in Pontiac. You can look in any direction and pick up a piece of the process. You got to be involved in enough to know what the big picture is. I'll close this with Proverbs 4:7. Wisdom is the prime thing. Acquire wisdom and with all that thou acquire, acquire understanding. You need to know what the facts are. Thank you for your service. One and all.
All right, thank you, sir. President McGinnis, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. We're now at closing comments. Mayor Tim Grimal, you have the floor for seven minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for being here in attendance. It really was great hearing from the young people and, as I said earlier, our future is bright here in the city of Pontiac if we make sure that we invest in our future and that means investing in our youth. And so it really was inspirational and really powerful to, to hear from such bright young people earlier this evening. Couple of updates. Number one, we do have some additional town halls coming up next week on Wednesday, March 16th. These town halls relate to the question of the Clinton River Trail extension. As many of you know, the Clinton River Trail runs through a number of Oakland County communities along an old railway line. And that old railway line ran through the city of Pontiac, but unlike in other communities where the entire length of that railway line has been transformed into a public walking trail, only a portion of that trail or railway line here in Pontiac has been transformed into a trail. And that is on the western side of the city, from the city boundary on the west side to Bagley Street. It is in fact a trail in the form of the Clinton River Trail, but it then dead-ends at Bagley Street and it doesn't start up again until the eastern boundary of the city, Updike Road, where it begins again at the Auburn Hills city boundary line and continues east at that point. And there is a groundswell of support for trying to connect in some form or fashion those two trail segments so that people can walk the entire length of the trail, including through Pontiac. Long-term, we hope to assemble that trail along the old railway line. That is difficult and will take some time because most of that trail was sold off back in the nineties to private owners. The city, back then, for whatever reason, opted not to obtain the right-of-way to the entirety of that railway line and as a result, it's now largely in private hands. But we hope longer term to reassemble that into public hands and reopen that, that trail along the old railway line. In the shorter term, we want to make sure that we're connecting those trail segments through public streets and making sure that we're investing in sidewalks and in public walkways through other venues throughout the city so that people can still walk that trail length with a diversion through Pontiac. And in order to talk about what route that trail should follow through the city of Pontiac, we're holding these town hall forums next Wednesday, March 16th. The tentative notion about where this trail should run is through downtown Pontiac, along Pike Street and then out Pike Street to Martin Luther King and perhaps all the way east of and beyond Martin Luther King to another trail line where we do have public right-of-way, the so-called North Spur of the CN Railway. That's no longer a railway, but is being transformed into a trail. These town halls next Wednesday will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the, in the morning and early afternoon, right here in the city council chambers, the city hall, as well as that same day in the evening from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So two, two-hour sessions, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. right here in city council chambers next Wednesday, March 16th. In addition, from 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. that afternoon, there will be a public walking tour where the public is welcome to join us as we walk the proposed length of Pike Street where this trail may run. And Pike Street needs to be redone anyway. Anybody who's driven on Pike Street knows that it's in really terrible shape and needs to be repaved. And so we're talking about improving it, not just so that it's in much better shape for cars to drive on, but that it's done in a way that allows for better pedestrian traffic along it as well. So we encourage all of you to come out to these town halls, to come out to this public walking tour. The public walking tour will be organized outside of council chambers here on the second floor of city hall as well, so please join us. In addition, I want to again emphasize that we have interim youth recreation and youth enrichment programming happening at Harrington Elementary School. Please go to the city's website if you have young people who are interested in signing up for that, please go to the city website and sign up. You can do that by going to the city of Pontiac's website, go to Departments and under Departments, click on Community Centers, under Community Centers, click on Youth Recreation Centers, and then click on the link that says, "Click here to log into Pontiac's Rec Desk." Under that, if you log into the Rec Desk program, you can enroll in various programs and it's really a great opportunity for our community's young people. As I said, we're working to make sure that we have a concrete proposal for a long-term permanent youth recreation, youth enrichment programming, starting with the coming new fiscal year of the city, starting July 1st of this year. But in the meantime, we have these interim programs available for our young people at Harrington Elementary School. Now, when it comes to athletic programs, we're doing that in partnership with the Sheriff PAL program at the United Wholesale Mortgage Sports Complex, which is an amazing facility there. And in order to sign up for those programs, go to sheriffpal.com. That's S-H-E-R-I-F-F-P-A-L dot com. And the city of Pontiac has partnered with Sheriff PAL, along with other organizations, to make that an opportunity for our young people as well. Thank you so much for coming out and staying through the meeting and that's all I have to share this evening, Mr. President.
Mayor Grimal, was there also a town hall in the evening on that same day? I think you mentioned the, the first two or was I premature in that?
There, there is and I, I thought I mentioned that, but just again, on March 16th, the next Wednesday, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there's one town hall right here in city council chambers and that evening from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., there's a second town hall right here in city council chambers that same day, next Wednesday, March 16th. And between the two, from 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. is the public walking tour if people are interested in actually walking this proposed route for the Clinton River Trail connector.
Thank you for that information and thank you for the administration making it available depending on people with their differing schedules and competing availability. Clerk Grandison, any closing comments?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to send my condolences to our clerk and I'd just like for us to keep him and his family in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, representing District One, Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're gonna try it again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. Think like a queen. A queen is not afraid to fail. Failure is another stepping stone to greatness. That was said by Oprah Winfrey. It's time to put together all of our resources and make District One even greater. What am I talking about? March the 12th, 2022, at 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., I am having my first coffee and conversation. That means if you have all these questions, what's gonna happen in District One? How am I gonna be involved? I don't really like what you wear. Doesn't matter, you can come in and say what you want. Tell you why. We have to be socially engaged, we have to be invested in District One to make it even greater because downtown is our treasure and South Side is my home. And the reason why I mention it, we have guest speakers like Haley Stevens, one of our congresswomen, running for District 11. We also have door prizes, we have free food and free conversation and I want to get to know you. And if you don't have my cell phone number, let me- And if you don't have my cellphone number, let me just give it to you one more time. It's 248-390-0591. I'm normally up at 6 o'clock in the morning because I have nothing to do, and I want to see you at the meeting, March the 12th. Second thing I'm very excited about, I've been working really hard on the t-shirts. Okay. State of the County is going to be in March the 15th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in my district, in District 1, the N1 concourse, and save the date because we have a district-city, excuse me, a city, where I clean up from April the 18th to the 23rd. And lastly, I have $20,000, and I need to do something with it. And that's, what do you mean by that? I want to do community, community program, community engagement, community activities, but no one has submitted anything to me, so I'm hoping on Saturday, everybody write out what they want, because we have to spend this money. But what, when is it, sir?
This fiscal year ends June 30th.
One more time.
So the district projects by city council appropriated, what's remaining is approximately $20,000 for each of the seven districts, so our intention is to be able to, and it was the previous council that passed that budget, and some projects already did happen, but that's the remaining amount that we hope to put to good use in our respective districts by June 30th.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, just to send some blessings and positive energy to everyone who stays in the city of Pontiac, stay encouraged, stay engaged, and stay involved, and to that I say, good night.
Thank you, District 2's Councilperson, Brett Nicholson.
Good evening again. Thank you, mayor and administration, for another week of transparency and responsiveness. Want to say different in District 2, we've had over 30 responses to our community projects.
It's just in the competition now.
But we won.
It's all right, it's all right.
So, so we are gonna be, I've been reaching out to people who have decided that they're interested in being on the feasibility leg now of this, and going through all of those ideas and figuring out what we can actually do to make the most use of that $20,000. We're very excited for what's happening with the Rotary Club in those 100-plus trees, because that really gobbled up about five of those ideas, which were trees. So we've, we were able to make even more use of those funds and make them last even longer. District 2 advisory, council advisory meeting, that is happening again, fourth Monday of every month, at Goldner Walsh Nursery, so that's the 20, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m. Be there, it's a great time. I think we probably are also winning the competition for the most engagement because we always pack the place out, so please do come, share your ideas, ask all the questions. I'll do my very best to answer them. I have one request that I, you know, coming, looking through different things on the packet and seeing things that are coming up, if there is any way to encourage, as we continue to appoint new people to boards and commissions, especially the Historic District Commission, if they would consider moving their meeting time, it is at the same time as our council meetings. So representing multiple historic districts, I would really love to be able to be there and be a part of that meeting, but I never can because they meet downstairs when we're meeting. So it would be nice if they would consider that. I know there's a number of new appointments, and thank you to the mayor and administration, and thank you to all of those that applied for those boards and commissions. Those appointments are happening, there's a lot of new blood, a lot of new energy. It's really nice to see that continuing throughout what we're doing moving forward.
Thank you, District 3, Councilman Mikhail Goodman.
Hello, everyone. So first of all, I just want to start off by talking about International Women's Day, which is today, by bringing up some of the, to me personally, most influential women that have kind of influenced the way that I go through life. The first being Dolores Huerta, who was a massive labor leader, especially when it comes to the United Farm Workers, worked very closely with Cesar Chavez, and again, is a very massive figure when it comes to labor activism. My favorite person, who you will probably hear me mention multiple times, as Councilwoman Rutherford knows, Angela Davis, being one of the most influential civil rights leaders that we have ever seen, one of the most immensely powerful minds that we have ever had to deal with, and gladly. Going to Kathleen Cleaver, the legendary Black Panther, who, who did so much work when it comes to, you know, doing the part of the work that sometimes we, we don't like to talk about, you know, that we, that is not as pretty and as easy to deal with, but the, the, in the trenches work. And especially all the Rosie the Riveters and factory workers of Pontiac, who obviously, like my, like both matriarchs in my family, both my great-grandma and my grandma on separate sides of the family, working at plants in Pontiac. Making sure that we acknowledge the influence of these women is so important. Sifting gears, thank you to the administration and to the building department for finally getting some stuff patched in front of my house. I love being able to drive down Kennet and not gambling about losing a tire every day. It's amazing. And then, before I get to the long announcements, I do want to say, another amazing woman that I want to acknowledge today is my former student, Luxurious Lofton, who decided to stay till the end of the council meeting. It is amazing to see her here. Not only did she come to my inauguration, she was one of the last classes that I taught when I worked at ATAP. So to come up here and, you know, blow us all the way with that amazing poem, which I do want to sign copy of, I am just so immensely proud of you. And then to shift gears one last time, yes, please give her a round of applause. As we would say, that is black excellence right there. And then the very last thing, so I can run through it, I do have some announcements from Pontiac United. Pontiac United is doing a youth and government program, and if anyone's interested, please reach out to Pontiac United, spelled out the way that it is, at gmail dot com. They currently have 29 students who really want to be involved in local, state, and federal government, you know, knowledge and work, so if anyone's interested in joining that, please reach out to them. Also, the dance class that is taught by Jala Jefferson, also through Pontiac United, will be continuing to hold their dance class every Wednesday at 6:00. If you are interested, email them, they currently do have a waitlist, but if you are interested, people, as you know, people do drop out of programs, so if you're interested, please reach out and try to get involved. It is coed from the ages of 8 to 18. And, you know, of course, the very last thing that I just again want to also highlight, all the students that came through Pontiac United today, and their amazing work to obviously highlight these amazing children in our city. But with that, that is all.
Thank you, District 4's Representative, Councilwoman Kathleen James.
Good evening. A few things, first of all, I would like to say that I am delighted about the, the decision that was made for the skate park, that it's going to be at Oakland Park, because Oakland's a beautiful park, it's one of our premier parks in the city, and I think that adding the skate park amenity there is just going to take it up another notch. So I'm very happy that that was the decision that was made, and can't wait until that skate park is actually installed. I also was just so impressed with the kids tonight. I mean, it just, it just seems like we haven't even had a meeting. The whole meeting was about those kids. And, you know, they did such a wonderful job, and when you look at, you know, I think about this often, but it's just, I have never seen, I've, I've lived in Pontiac since 64, I came here in 1964. I have never seen the spirit of cooperation and collaboration as it exists today. I was, I was just blown away with the commitment from Pontiac United, from Oakland Forward, from the Extend Foundation, coming together, Pontiac groups coming together and putting that whole program together, it's, it's just incredible. And, and I, I know that we are in good hands, because these kinds of things have never happened before, and I think because they're happening now, we can really look forward to our city coming together. I, you know, I feel so very strongly that, you know, we are going to come together, we are going to solve the problems that we have, and we have a lot of them. But when we have the kind of cooperation between entities within the city, there's, we can't do, we can't do anything but prosper from that. So I am, I applaud those groups for what they did, I commend the children, the ones that cried and were nervous, and you, you can understand, you know, it was just a packed house. But it was just such a wonderful experience to see the kids and to hear the kids, and again, I want to commend those groups that brought this all together. Also, the, the, the program that Pontiac United did, the dance program that, that Mikhail just talked about, they opened that program up for applications, and there were over 100 girls who applied for that dance program. They had to limit it to 70, so as he said, there is a waiting list, but that lets us know the need in our community for programming for our children. And so, you know, the city is doing what it can, but it is great to see our city organizations stepping up with these great programs. The PAL program is a great program. So we all need to work together to make sure that our kids have activities to do in the summer, the summer is coming, we need to work together to make sure our kids have activities that they can be involved in throughout the summer. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, District 5's Representative, Councilman William Parker, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I too was impressed with the, the boldness and the excellence that our kids perform with today, but the most thing that impressed me was they, they continued to move forward even as fear attacked them. When they got fearful, they kept at it, they cried, they did whatever they had to do, but they kept at it. And we have to teach our kids not to give up just because the obstacles exist, you have to keep pressing through. And so that's what I was most impressed with, that they had the courage to say, I don't care that people see me cry, I'm gonna do what I need to do to get through what I need to get through. So I was greatly impressed with that. I was impressed with these young men who stayed with Amazon, because they're right. Usually people come in, tell you what they want, and they leave, but I'm glad y'all stayed by, and I'm glad that y'all have such a desire and a commitment to the community. This is what Pontiac needs, people who are gonna have stick toward it, not just come and tell you what I want, I want to hear what you got, so we can help move the city forward. So thank you for staying there. I want to thank President McGinnis for helping write the resolution for Ellos Williams, I didn't have a clue, and yet he put something great together, and I want to thank him for how he did that. I want to remind everybody, I want to thank the city administration for the patching that they have been doing in regards to all the snow removal. Ginnis got patched, most of it, so I thank you very much. And some of the other streets, I was watching them actually go down, I believe it was Baldwin that they were patching on later on this afternoon, so I want to thank them for being committed to making sure that the potholes get fixed so people don't damage their cars. Lastly, I want to remind everybody that the District 5 CDC will be meeting Thursday, March 10th, at 6:00 p.m. down in the Lions Hall Room at City Hall, please come out and hear what we're, what we're going to be working on. And just, brother president, I also attended the SRT meeting today, and there was a lot of information I put in everybody's basket, but just a quick snapshot, crime is down, participation is up, the PAL's spring schedule is out, and there will be a document disposal, a shredding disposal coming up in the near future, and all those dates are in your individual councilman's box. That's all I have.
Thank you. District 6's Representative, President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington.
Good evening, everyone. We need to get a little enthused like Melanie Rutherford said. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You know, when you're on, you're on, you're on this venue with all these fantastic councilmen, you know, they all, you know, they're good, honestly, so. Being six, I have to really listen to a lot of good speeches and think about what I'm gonna say. But first and foremost, I'd like to thank the Pontiac High School Phoenix Men's Rasslin' Team, they went off to the state championships. All three young men placed in the state championships, all three young men, first time I think that happened in a long time. So congrats to Tavion, Julius, and Adams for, for what they've done, and actually I'm gonna work on some, I got the president back there, so definitely we need these young men and some of the other rasslers to come and present themselves to the city council coming up. The youth speeches were, were great, I remember my, I remember at times when I was that little, and my mom made me get in front of the church, and I had to, I had to speak Romans 6 and 8 chapter, I had to memorize it. And I was so nervous that I started, I almost cried, I didn't cry, I, you know, I'm a man, I can't say I cried.
Crying is in order in these churches.
But she had to help me through that, she came up and said, I know you can do this. I said, okay, I mean, I'm not gonna get in trouble, Mom, if I, if I mess up. And I finally got it out in front of, in front of the church. So just to see our youth at that age, working on these speeches and learning their history is definitely magnificent. Well, Echo and one of the councilmen about Oakland Park, I'm very happy that that park was chosen to be, I did tell the community, I did tell the 6th district to call the mayor, I'm not gonna lie. You know. But I still, I didn't come to the meeting yesterday because I, I wanted to stay neutral, right, so. But again, thank you for making that decision. Groups like We Care Neighborhood Association, GM Housing, have been working in Oakland Park, and some other volunteers for over a decade now, so that really adds to that park and finishes that park off. So I'm very happy for that. The 6th district need volunteers for Earth Day. I really need volunteers, city of Pontiac, for Earth Day. We got several parks, we got some neighborhood streets that we need to get cleaned up in the 6th district as well, so. And we gotta plant some trees, I need 12 volunteers to help me plant trees in the 6th district, I just wanted to mention that. Also, everybody mentioned $20,000, I have got some calls, I still have most of that $20,000 to give to quality 6-digit projects that I'm willing to talk to you about, so please call me at 313-318-7745. I can be reached 24 hours, I probably won't get back to you, but the phone, I'll see the message in the morning. All right, so please call me. And again, thank each and every one of you for all the work you do, thank you for making all the committee meetings this week, and I know it's a lot on, on our time, but I definitely appreciate each and every one of you. Good night.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7's representative, and did you catch what District 2 tried to pull off? In terms of what they said about turnout for their meetings? Well, on Monday, March 14th, at 7:00 p.m., the East Side Community Meeting is going down. And so we have nearly 9,000 people that live in our district, we got nearly 9,000 people that work at United Wholesale Mortgage in our district. You heard tonight, we got 4,000 people that streamed through to work every day in Amazon in our district, and that's not counting all the other destinations in 7. So I know that the interest is there and the possibility is there, so show up and show up on the second Monday of every month at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, which is at 351 Prospect in Pontiac's District 7. So I'll see you, hopefully, this coming Monday evening for our East Side Community Meeting, where we can sink our teeth into those ongoing conversations about how we can improve green spaces through our neighborhoods, through District 7, and how we can invest in worthwhile projects to move the needle forward for our residents. I want to thank the Pontiac Transportation Museum, and specifically their volunteer and active member Renee Voight-Porath for helping partner with Pontiac City Hall for the Women's History Month display that you can see downstairs all this month. And as Pro Tem Carrington emphasized, Oak Hill Cemetery is doing their cleanup starting next week, so if you have anything at the gravesite that you don't want pitched, please claim it before they start their, their cleanup, and that's, you know, so they can move the winter wreaths and any other debris and have it ready for spring, they wanted to make sure we had shared that. You had heard mentioned that District 1 is hosting the State of the County address, and we are intentionally working to keep the agenda for next Tuesday evening's council meeting very abbreviated, so that there won't be special presentations, will be very limited resolutions and ordinances before us. Of course, public comment is still an opportunity, but we will be trying to move the meeting along very swiftly, so that way you and us can make our way down the street to hear Oakland County Executive Dave Coulter, his address begins at 7:00 p.m., and then there's a reception that follows, we want to make sure that the community isn't prevented from being able to benefit from that. But also, and it's worth noting, he's doing it in Pontiac again, the center of it all, the county seat, the county executive will be coming here for us, so that Pontiac residents can hear from him on Tuesday, March 29th, at that city council meeting, because he wants to bring Pontiac specific updates, and he wanted to make sure that no one felt slighted because they had to do it on a Tuesday night, which is our standing council meeting. I'll just conclude with, we have very serious deadlines approaching when it comes to property tax foreclosure. If you are behind on your property taxes for your home, please contact the Oakland County Treasurer's Office so they can get the resources to you. Treasurer's Office so they can get the resources to you and help council and just avoid the worst possible scenario. We want all of our residents to stay in their homes. And finally, there's a Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. I don't know what they call that acronym, but M-H-A-F, M-H-A-F, that is really direct dollars available for insurance, for condo payments, for, all sorts of items are covered under that new state fund that's been announced, so don't miss out, find out that information. With that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? I'll make the motion. Second. Moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman, hearing no discussion. Roll call and adjournment. Clerk Grandison.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven Yays?
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:48 p.m. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for your time.